All right, everyone else ready? Okay, I'm gonna interrupt the two men here. Good evening, it is now 5:30 on Monday, October 13th, 2025. So I'd like to call the session our Common City Council Meeting for the City of Brookings. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Malmberg.
Here.
Counselor Pareda.
Here.
Counselor Martin. Counselor Fulton. Mayor Hodges.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Ceremonies, Appointments and Announcements. First is Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation from the SAFE Project. So I will go ahead and read our proclamation, and then afterwards, if you'd like to come up and say a few things, you're more than welcome to. Okay. So City of Brookings proclamation, "In the City of Brookings, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, I urge all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs sponsored by the SAFE Project and other community organizations to work toward the elimination of intimate partner violence. Whereas, in just one day across the U.S. and its territories, nearly 75,000 victims of domestic violence sought services from domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than 9,000 requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation could not be provided because programs lack the resources to meet victims' needs. Whereas, the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community, throughout the United States and the world, and whereas racism, homophobia, transphobia, ageism, and discrimination based on physical ability, nationality, or other factors help to perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for some victims. Whereas, the need for safe housing continues to be rated as a survivor's most urgent need, and whereas Brookings joins with others across Oregon and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Brookings. Whereas, domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems. Each whose one thing they can do to end domestic violence or support victims adds a valuable and powerful component to transforming communities. Now, therefore be resolved that I, Isaac Hodges, Mayor of the City of Brookings, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In witness whereof, I, Mayor Isaac Hodges, do heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Brookings, Oregon, to be affixed this 13th day of October 2025." Thank you. Would you like to come up and speak? And please state your name.
Hi there, my name is Rachel Espy. I'm the Executive Director of the SAFE Project. Thank you all so much for your time today. Firstly, I want to say thank you to Brooklyn, who was fantastic and helped me coordinate this all with you today. I don't have anything specific prepared for you, but as you may know, we've been providing domestic violence, sexual assault services up in Coos County for a little over 45 years. We were invited to come down to Curry County and start providing these services back in 2024. So we started providing these services in Curry County in July of 2024. So for the first six months, the last portion of 2024, we provided services to 129 survivors here in Curry County, which was 94 instances of information, referral, and housing support, 21 instances of personal advocacy and accompaniment. So that's things like helping folks to the hospital or helping folks with law enforcement interviews. 12 instances of criminal and civil justice advocacy, which is things like helping folks with protection orders. 132 instances of emotional support and safety planning. And we provided, we didn't have an emergency shelter at the time, but we provided housing for seven survivors and 70 bed nights in the, either a combination of our shelters in Coos or hotels. And then we also received 91 contacts on our 24/7 crisis line, and that was just in the last six months of 2024. So we're excited to be able to come back next year and share with you the impact we've had on survivors here in Curry County and Brookings specifically for the year of 2025. We have been able to open our shelter up in Gold Beach. We are serving survivors at that shelter, and we're just super thankful for your support in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like to get some pictures, so I'll bring the proclamation.
Yes.
We'll get them with you.
Perfect.
Okay.
That's one hair thing.
We have something to hold up, too.
We all go?
I think so.
You can't avoid the camera.
If you get locked out, how does that happen? Locked out, it's a must. Okay. Okay.
Am I missing a sheet? Because I'm not.
No, that's okay.
I don't have anything.
We have to. It's a lot, right? Okay? Oh, great, awesome. Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more. Two more. Okay, there we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay. Yay, thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
It's nice to see you again. I haven't seen you in like, four years. We got to meet in the, um, where it's possible. Many years ago. I do, if you don't want to, I've been a lot of these. We're kind of papering our own. And so, that's, thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate you all. Now we're gonna go to the big bed, there's.
All right, so number two on our Ceremonies, Appointments and Announcements is the September Yard of the Month Awards. For the commercial yard was Manly Art Center at 433 Oak Street, and for residential was 7180 Vista Ridge Drive, owner Peggy Rupert.
It was me.
You got to go.
I did.
All right, how was it?
Yeah, it was a real blessing. I, Peggy was very welcoming, had baked us treats and was really hospitable, and it was a sweet thing for her, bittersweet. I think her husband had worked really hard in his past fairly recently, so sweet to honor his memory and his name. And then, yeah, making connections with Manly Art Center, they are celebrating their 70th year this year, and it was really neat to touch base with their one staffed person and kind of connect, trying to connect them with Mr. Sneerson, who's headed up the Art Commission. And so, yeah, I was really grateful to get to be a part of that.
That's phenomenal, thank you. And I know, Manly, you know, it's sort of, the art center is, it's the one right on the hill there, right? So it's sort of out of the way, I need to pay more attention when I go by and check it out.
I didn't even realize for like, half of the years that we've lived here that that place existed, and so then discovering it. And anybody who's looking for gifts for the holidays, there's a lot of local artists' features in there, they change them out every month, so great way to support local artists and provide unique gifts that you wouldn't be able to find anywhere else, because they're all local to our area.
Yeah, that's great, that's a great advice. If you go to the dog park, too, you sort of walk by it if you park on this side anyways, so. Well, that's great, thank you for that. So that's the last month, correct? So until next year. All right. Okay, moving on to Item E, Oral Requests and Communications from the Audience. Let me just read my script here. This is the time for public comment if you have turned in a public comment form to the city recorder. Comments are limited to five minutes, this is not the time for discussion, council is not able to provide an immediate answer or response. The city manager may direct staff with you regarding your comment or questions if provided with contact information on the form. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address for the record. And our public comment tonight, we have the privilege of having County Commissioner Lynn Coker joining us, and Lynn, if you want to come on up, he's one of the United States Navy Sea Cadets.
I do, and thank you very much for the opportunity. I do have some prepared comments that I wanted to get into the public record, because as a county commissioner, we have declared that we were going to support and sponsor a sea cadet effort throughout the county. And Brookings got to be the first place where we want to implement this, so you are maiden voyage. So I am here tonight to discuss the U.S. Navy Sea Cadets Program. By the way, I think this is a transformational opportunity for South Coast Oregon, especially as it works in families that have youngsters. The U.S. Naval Sea Cadet Program is a nationally recognized youth leadership and character building program. It is the official youth outreach program for both the United States Navy and the Coast Guard, and is designed for kids between 10 years old and 17. I mean, that's young. They focus on four different categories for training and experiences. They focus on leadership and discipline development, maritime safety, and seamanship. They do a lot of education in the area of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, as well as technical skills. They also have a hallmark effort in civic service, and of course teamwork and team building. The cadets train alongside both active-duty Navy and Coast Guard units. They participate in field exercises, aviation, medical training, shipboard life, and even experience international exchanges. These youth, these youth gain experiences that very few area kids will be able to have. I'm so grateful that this might be blossoming here. So the implementation of the Sea Cadet Program here in South Coast will deliver real lasting benefits to our youth and communities, and I categorized those benefits. One is that it empowers our local youth. This cadet development program builds confidence, discipline, leadership, and of course teamwork. And these are qualities that will enhance their schoolwork, it will set them on stages for success in terms of employment, and it creates a passion for engagement in civic enterprises. It is a career path, not just for the Navy and the Coast Guard, but definitely it is a career path there. But if you look at, I've had people ask me this, they say, Lynn, where do my kids go when they graduate from high school as cadets? And statistics over the years have shown that 50% of the kids go into one or another branch of the service. The other 50% go into private enterprise, they go into public work, and leadership positions up and down the ranks. And what we've seen is that they go into after high school advanced training programs, whether it's college, or trade schools, or whatever, in a percentage-wise that is nearly, it's somewhere between 90 and 100% of the sea cadet graduates go on to further their education and training and engagement. It's just a remarkable kind of thing in terms of career path. There is the community engagement portion of their work. The sea cadets regularly volunteer in civic projects, the emergency preparedness exercises in their community, public ceremonies, and they build a strong bond between the young people and their hometown leadership. It's, it is a positive, structured environment. So in an era when we have many teens who have very little mentorship and little understanding of what it means to have purpose in their life, they get those expectations offered to them, and they are reinforced through the group dynamic of the local core. And that's something that can't be erased once it's established. So our contention is, is that Brookings has been and still is a maritime town, we have a great history here in South Coast Oregon with the ocean and oceanic enterprises, and that heritage will be extended with the introduction and the implementation of a really strong sea cadet program. So we're launching it this week here in Brookings. We have a huge requirement for volunteer leadership. We have to approach our port authorities, we have to approach our schools, we have to approach our trade groups, we have to approach our commerce, our chambers of commerce, certainly our schools, in order to get the leadership that's going to help us move forward. And in support of that, we're holding our first leadership training orientation for the sea cadets, October 17th, Friday, here at the library, and will be in the River Room. And we have two identical events taking place that day. One starts at 10:00 in the morning and runs to noon, the second identical program runs at noon through 2:00, so that prospective volunteers have a choice when they have time to be able to participate. And we have an absolutely excellent leadership coach coming to town for that. She's a retired lieutenant in the Navy, she is our regional director for this portion of the Pacific Northwest, has set up these programs before, and her stories of success absolutely are knee-buckling. They, what happens to the kids that she's been able to work with is just astounding. So she's going to come to town and spend the day with us, and I would invite you to join us if you want. I've given staff copies of our flyer for this event, and I've also included in that material a copy of the pilot news article that appeared last week regarding our efforts. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate you sharing that with us. You know, growing up in a time when ROTC was in every high school, and I think there's less and less opportunities for leadership for our youth, and, you know, whether or not they ultimately decide to go into the military or go another route, instilling those leadership values in at an early age is something that we certainly don't have enough of. I really appreciate that, and thank you for sharing.
Okay, moving on, next to the Item F, the Consent Calendar. This is to approve council minutes from September 22nd, 2025, and accept planning commission minutes from July 1st, 2025.
I motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
Counselor Pareda.
Yes.
Counselor Malmberg.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Item G, Staff Reports, Public Hearings, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Final Orders. The first one is the Reedport Flood Reduction Resiliency Project Discussion. And...
You want me to start, then you can chime in?
Sounds good.
Okay. Counselor Pareda has requested that the council discuss this Reedport Flood Reduction Resiliency Project for this meeting. The City of Reedport recently issued a joint permit application to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and other state agencies to improve its existing levee system. The Oregon Department of Land Conservation Development has opened public comment period from September 26th to October 26th under the Federal Coastal Zone Management Act review process. Counselor Pareda is asking that the council consider submitting a public comment letter supporting the project, given its regional importance and resilience of, or reliance of Brookings and Curry County residents on Highway 101 for transportation, emergency response, and supply chain continuity. And at this time, I'd invite Counselor Pareda, she probably has a little bit more in-depth than what I have provided, or?
Well, I appreciate you supplying all the documentation, because that's not something I had seen previously, but in a number of regional meetings, the mayor of Reedport has talked about how long they've been working on getting funding for this project and trying to get this project in place. There are some serious concerns for their community if they are not able to make the updates and improvements to get it back to its original code. And I did reach out and didn't hear back from either her or their city manager to get a little more details, because I don't want to misquote anything that's been stated. But I know this is a very big priority for their community, and it does affect a portion of Highway 101. And I've had community residents express to me their concerns of possibilities of being landlocked here and limited routes out, and the necessity to make sure our roadways are maintained so that we are able to continue to receive supplies and have those evacuation routes. So I think it would be wise of us as a council to just put in our way in our support, that we support this project for the City of Reedport and how it affects us and our community.
Yeah, I personally have no, no problem with giving them a letter of support, and I think even the other option, which probably carries more weight, is the cities up the coast and the county, you know, giving them a letter of support. To your point, Highway 101 is a vital artery for us, period. And I know, I was thinking of this, and I was looking at where it was at and everything, well, you can cut over through a drain, you know, and, you know, you could still make it east, or obviously 199, but the point is, is we have, it's not just about us, number one, but also, number two, we have to keep our highway open, because for each and every one of us, small towns on the coast, but that highway's out, we're in an island. I mean, and we've been there. We've had this 101 sliding into the ocean, and, you know, fuel, food, medical, et cetera. So if we can help a city prevent losing Highway 101, I totally support, not only us doing this letter of support, but working with the other towns clear up through Reedport and Florence and wherever to send a larger letter of support.
Yeah, I agree, and it's really critical that we have community support for projects like this that have regional impacts, and having resiliency and redundancy in our infrastructure is also critical. As you know, I'm heavily involved with that with my job, and just south of us, we have areas that are constantly sliding and providing constant threats to the communities of Brookings and Crescent City and the Urock Tribe as well, are heavily impacted when we have big shutdowns like that. So anyway, just really, really critical that we get behind this, and I agree with what the mayor said, I think it weighs, has a little bit more weight to it if we can approach both the county, Port Orford, Gold Beach as well, and try to get some, try to get a joint letter of support together.
I'm in agreement with that, I think it does carry more weight if we can do it, but I know we have, the 26th is the deadline at midnight, I know that's pretty short notice to try to do that collectively. If there's a way that we can make that happen, I certainly support that. But I think at a minimum, we as a city need to provide some public comment that we support the project.
And what we could do, Counselor, is draft up a letter of support from Brookings and have it ready, but I can reach out to these other three entities, the county, Orford, and Gold Beach, and see if we can put something together as a whole, or just include that with a group of letters in support of this, so however you'd like to do it, so.
I think personally, that's great. I think have our letter ready to go, but in the meantime, let's see if everyone else can either put it together in one packet or as one letter we all sign, either way.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as I, as far as I'm going. Guess it's not really a motion, but it doesn't need to be, does it?
It could be, you know.
Okay.
I mean, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and just, I'd like to motion to appoint the Brookings City Manager to form a letter of support for the Reedport Flood Reduction Resiliency Project, and also in conjunction with that, reach out to the City of Gold Beach, the City of Port Orford, and the county as well, and formulate a group letter, or each one individual letters to send to the state.
I second.
Call the question.
Counselor Pareda.
Yes.
Counselor Malmberg.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
And the second, under Item G, is the First Amendment to the Brookings City Manager Employment Agreement, which you will find the amendment in your packet. Essentially what this is, and anyone can correct me as well after I, let me get to it here real quick.
Page 55.
Yeah, I just gotta find the page. I had it marked earlier, but, but just a little background, city manager has been here now just over a year, and in that time, recently, we passed a wage adjustment for other city staff, but he was not privy to that. So essentially, we've made, or added to the compression that is going on in the pay scale in the city. And so in order to reduce that compression, what we're asking for here tonight is to amend the city manager's agreement to match the city management, the Brookings Management Compensation Plan that the city council passed on August 11th, and have that also apply to the city manager, and that would be retro to July 1st of 2025. City manager, if I missed something, please clarify.
I think you hit all the points there.
Okay. So any discussion?
I think it's important that we try to do what we can to mitigate that compression, and also, you know, as time goes on, just to be competitive within the market as a whole, so I do think it's important that we adopt this amendment.
Yeah, I agree, and I think when we had recently approved the Management Compensation Plan, it, you know, it kind of slipped my mind that the city manager was excluded from that, so I agree, I fully support that the city manager be entitled to the same compensation plan that was approved for the management.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll motion to authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment Agreement to the City of Brookings City Manager Employment Agreement.
I'll second.
Call the question.
Counselor Pareda.
Yes.
Counselor Malmberg.
Yes.
Mayor Hodges.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, Item H is informational non-action items, which is the September 2025 vouchers. A discussion on those? If not, we'll move right into the remarks from mayor, counselors, and city manager.
Well, I can start us off by just giving a quick update. We had our first construction, pre-construction meeting last week in regards to the wastewater plant rehabilitation that's getting ready to start up. There was one player that was absent from the table, and it was a USDA, which they're providing the loan, which is a little scary right now, but with the shutdown, but, you know, I'm hoping that that'll all be remedied over the next week or two, but it was a very, very constructive meeting, and look forward to getting that taken care of and started, as well as our collection system that we're going to be starting that next phase, hopefully within the next few months going out to bid for that one as well. So, and also, Chief's not here tonight, but I wanted to, our CROs, Gabby Dominguez and Sofia Lucero, are hosting a women's self-defense class. It's going to be hosted at the EOC on November 1st of this year, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30. It's open to all females ages 18 and older. High school-age students are welcome if they are accompanied by a participating parent or guardian. They say just show up wearing light athletic clothing, no weapons, no jewelry, and right now they only have space for... And right now, they only have space for 20 women. And once you've registered, you'll be notified by email or phone. So this is our first attempt at putting one of these together and pretty excited about doing it. But this is also going to be on the Facebook page for the police department as well as the city's Facebook page as well. So if you're interested, the instructions are there on how to sign up for the class. I think it's very important, so. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, well, the mayor knows, I ran into the mayor there at the Apple Press and just wanted to bring that up. That was a really cool event they have every year down there at the Curry County Museum and really, really, just really great, small town, you know, reminder of your identity here in Brookings and, you know, be able to look at some of the exhibits in the museum. And it's, and I've done it every time and I'm always just blown away by the support. Anyway, just wanted to bring that up. I really appreciate all the effort that goes into that every year. It's just a neat, unique thing that Brookings has every year, so.
I will say something as well. I agree, the apple cider press is always fun down there at the museum. And of course, we had the honor of my family of being pioneer citizens, so the display's still up. So it was probably the last time we'll see it next year, you know, new, new, new family comes through. But that also adds a little bit more to it this year for us. I didn't get any apple pie, I'm a little bit frustrated with that, but guess I'll have to wait until next year for the apple pie. He brought up the city Facebook page, if any of you want to look on there. I'm on there, but that's not what's important. My dog is on there, Norman, so he's stealing the spotlight, so go on there and check Norman out. He's our, he's our youngest in the household right now. He sort of runs the house, a one-year-old Newfoundland. He's 135-ish pounds and growing. And then the last thing, I just wanted to circle back around on Commissioner Coker's presentation of the Sea Cadets. I agree with what Counselor Malmberg said earlier, very important. I personally would speak to say I support this program and would ask the city of Brookings, anyone with the time and the energy and the, especially expertise, although I'm sure they would be trained if they don't have that, to volunteer for this program. I just want to reiterate what the Commissioner Coker had stated. They do need volunteers. There is, the first meeting for volunteers, October 17th, at the Brookings Library in the River Room. Two classes, the first one's from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00, and the second one is from 12:00 noon to 2:00 p.m. Again, coming up quick, October 17th, so just a few days away. And you know, out of everything you said, Commissioner Coker, and what I've read on the handout, it's all impressive, but the one thing that stood out for me, especially in today's day and age, is to hear that 90 to 100% of the cadets that come through there have a career path or at least have goals set towards a career path. And I think that is rare and unusual these days. So just for that, let alone everything else, it's very important that they do in that program, but just that one piece makes me want to push this through more than anything. So thank you for the presentation and I hope, I hope we get a good volunteer turnout on the 17th. And maybe next time, we can even have a little presentation on the agenda, if you guys are able and willing.
Yeah, but might come back after their first excursion.
There you go, that'd be great. Okay. Do you have anything else to say, or?
No, I, I'm just in agreement with everything that was said. I know I had sons who wrestled and come from a long line of servicemen in my family and think this is important. I'm really glad to see the efforts and energy that have been undertaken by the commissioners to get this up and running in our community. I think it's very important to pour into our youth. And so I'm excited to see that coming to be. And thanks to council for just their support and supporting the community of Reesport and their needs there and the way that, obviously, there's clear consensus that it affects our community. So thanks for entertaining that.
I have one more thing to say, so thank you for that. We also, three of us went up to the Lea City's 100th, correct?
100, yes.
Annual meeting. It was up in Portland. And so I actually, of all the different sessions they had, I learned the most from a session put on by the Albany Police Chief. I'm really glad I went to that. And if anyone, including myself because I hadn't seen it, but hasn't, doesn't know about that, they go onto the Albany Police, I don't know which social media, my bad, I think it's TikTok or, I don't know, one of the social medias, it's not Facebook. But they're, they, I guess they got up to a million subscribers and then they got cut off, so they had to restart and they're back up to half a million again. So that was very intriguing, a police department, how in the world, what, anyways, they really, it's very unique. I'm not, I'm not saying this, that that's something we would do for our police force or to go in that direction, but it makes you think outside the box. And the fact that there's different ways you can approach your community and partner with them, and their police force has done it through social media. And, and that would be a scary venture, I could imagine, but so far, they've done very well with it. And she sort of gave a presentation as to the benefits of it, some of the negatives, what they've dealt with, as well as other things. She discussed other things as well, but, but that was, that was the one that stood out most to me. But, but I just appreciated getting to go to that, to that event. So it's worth a while.
I heard another counselor at the meeting mention that same session and how impacting that was, so.
Yeah, it was one of those where you look around the room and everyone's, she was a very dynamic speaker as well, which is always helpful. She wasn't just sitting up there droning on. So that was great, but, but yeah, which the presentation itself, so. All right, well, enough said, I guess, for tonight. No one else has anything to say? Well, adjourn.